Yes, please. And counsel, in front of your space there, you have two or three pieces of paper. One is Raise the Parking Fees, that's a whole packet that will be for your presentation with Anne McFarland. The other one is two rolls. If you look at your rolls and there's rolls that you can't do, let me know, I have a whole stack of them. I'd be happy to switch you out with bungee jumper or burnt out member. So just let me know. Yes, I am ready. She's there.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, this evening's study session for April 11th, 2022. I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Excuse.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Thank you, Sean. Tonight's agenda item for council discussion begins with Resolution Number 5658. A resolution expressing intent to explore annexation of the bridges, real property located in the Kent City District. To present this resolution will be directed Jeff Tate.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council Mayor. For the record, my name's Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development. So Resolution 5658 is a resolution that we are recommending to bring before City Council for action on Monday of next week, April 18th. The effect of the resolution is to make a council or legislative statement that the City of Auburn is moving forward in an exploratory spirit to explore annexation of the bridges. So I've come before City Council in the past, back in January, I think, and talked about the Bridges community. There's some materials in your packet that are behind the resolution that include the materials that were presented that January evening. And what's interesting about this resolution is that I'm presenting tonight, presumably coming forward to City Council next week, but the same resolution is being presented to the Kent City Council on the evening of April 19th, that's Tuesday next week, with anticipated or recommended action that evening as well. So really, in many ways, this is a joint resolution, if enacted upon, the language is identical for Auburn and for Kent, to say that we, as two cities, are moving forward with exploring the option of that annexation. There's a lot of work to be done between now and a potential action for annexation. And that action is an item that will come back to the City Council for recommendation at a future date. But in the meantime, there will be a need for dialogue with the community, those who are affected by the annexation, those who own property there, those who live around the area, talking to special taxing districts like Valley Regional Fire Authority and Puget Sound Fire and King County Assessor. Again, I think I talked about this in January a little bit, but it would have the effect of changing some voting districts and things of that nature. So there's a lot of moving parts to it, much work to be done in future discussions before City Council. But this is a starting point in terms of community dialogue, so taking the action and then going out to the Bridges and other folks around that area and saying, both cities have a sincere interest in navigating all of the issues and parts of this discussion together. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, on the language of the resolution or any other details about what we're looking forward to in the coming months or for the balance of this year. Thank you.
Counsel member Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Jeff. I was wondering if you could maybe expound a little bit more on the public interaction process? Thanks.
Yeah, this is going to be multi-layered, depending upon how things move forward. So the way that I would look at it is that there is a period of community dialogue about annexation, just changing cities. There's probably a separate but related conversation about the future land use designations and zoning designations for any land within the Bridges that is still developable. So that's why I say there's a couple of different layers, and this'll play out in phases. But the initial phase would be to, with the City of Kent, go to the 384 property owners who have property in the Bridges and talk to them probably first about what does that look like? I mean, people will have questions like, do my taxes change? You know, is my address changed? You know, like, what's going to happen if this area moves from Kent into Auburn? So I think you kind of look at it from a concentric ring sort of approach. The people who are most affected are the people who live within this community. But like I said, there's developable land in there, too. And people outside of that community who live around it are also going to have an interest in the future of that property and how it's used and whatever happens. So there's a level of engagement outside of the Bridges as well. So I think it'd be fair to say that, one, we have a website, you know, notices that go out, the normal kind of government stuff that would happen, probably some community meetings, and then formal public meetings that are before bodies like Auburn City Council and Kent City Council, so that people can come and say whether they like the idea or don't like the idea. Ultimately, that decision rests in the hands of the two legislative bodies. And the City of Kent would have to de-annex, and the City of Auburn would have to annex. And you would try to time those decisions so that there's not like a week where it's unincorporated or something like that.
Thanks. Counsel member Baldwin.
Thank you, Director Tate. To follow on or maybe redirect a little bit off of Chris's question, do you have a rough sense of what that timeline might look like for folks in that? The 384 property owners, are we talking May, June, July, October, for when they might begin to hear or see about that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. So right now, because they're Kent residents, Kent is sort of developing the communications, initial communications plan. I think that's important because we want to make sure that the people in that community don't feel like one city's trying to take the area into its city. So Kent will be leading with that. Kent is developing what a communications plan and schedule will look like. We don't have that yet. I assume over the course of the next week or so, we're going to learn a little bit more about that. We're definitely communicating as they develop materials. They share the materials with us so that we can be as aligned as possible and nobody has any blind spots or anything like that. But if I would have to estimate when we're going to start that engagement, it would be as soon as May.
Counsel member Trout Manuel.
Jeff, there's a little paragraph here about the impact to the property and utilities and all that. Do we have an idea about how much impact is going to, you know? Is it going to go up or is it going to go down? Or do we have an estimate on that?
Yeah, in fact, one of the things we can do is provide, we did do a little worksheet to sort of help as we anticipate that question coming up. It is a, when you look at property taxes and how they might go up or down a little bit, then you look at utility rates and how they might go up and down, boy, they're close. I'll tell you that. So, but we did do an analysis to show like with an average priced home, I can't remember what the amount was, but an average price home and how those different details would change. And I think that's something, as a follow-up, we can send to council so that you have that in hand before you consider action next week. But it's within double-digit dollars over the course of a year, meaning like $47 or $82. It's in that kind of smaller range.
All right, thank you.
Counsel member Baldwin.
Last question. Because these conversations that your department will be having with the City of Auburn, pardon me, with the City of Kent are going to be taking, you know, time and investigation and effort to manage that, do we have an allocation or budget for, you know, how much time we're putting towards this investigation?
It's definitely, I would put it in the category of administrative costs.
Yes.
It's not like Kent's paying us, we're not paying Kent, the property owners aren't paying, nobody's paying anything directly for the endeavor. I think it is that for years, it's been assumed this island that's inside of Auburn would eventually make its way into Auburn. Now is the time, I guess, to explore whether it's the right time to do that. But there is not a budget coding that's related or a line item budget that's related to this work.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question, Jeff, and it has to pertain with the Kent City itself. They're going to be doing their de-annexation council meetings, right?
Right.
And they will have a public forum as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you, Director Tate, really appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Jurassic Parliament Training by Anne McFarland. Let me give you an introduction on Ms. McFarland. Anne McFarland majored in Russian and Ancient Greek at the University of California, Santa Cruz. She received a Marshall Scholarship Award awarded by the British Government and earned a second degree at Cambridge University in England. She then joined the U.S. Foreign Service, serving as a diplomat in Pakistan and on the Soviet desk of the U.S. State Department. After marrying fellow Foreign Service Officer Liu McFarland, Anne became a stay-at-home mom in the Congo, Tanzania, and Nepal. On returning to Seattle, Anne became a Russian translator and was elected President of the American Translators Association. Since developing a Jurassic Parliament in 2000, she trains elected official staff and nonprofit board members across the nation. Anne is a professional registered parliamentarian with Andrew Estep. She is the author of Mastering Council Meetings. Please welcome Anne McFarland.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor Jay Raj. It's a great privilege to be here. I love seeing colleagues, both familiar and new, and I look forward to spending some time with you this evening on my favorite topic, Jurassic Parliament. So let me share my screen here. There we go. Just a moment while I resize. Zoom lets you do nice things, but you can't do them ahead of time. So our topic this evening is Great City Council Meetings, and we're going to cover quite a few different items. We're going to talk about meeting discussion, point of order, and appeal, how to do this, motions and amendments, who's in charge, public comment, and the right kind of control. And I know that many of you are very familiar with Jurassic Parliament's ideas on these topics, but I always update my presentations, and I hope that you'll find this valuable and even if familiar. So let's begin with why are we here? What's the point? My goal tonight is to equip you to run effective meetings to serve your community, or I should say, even more effective meetings, because I know you do this already. After taking this training, you'll be able to describe how the authority of the group is more important than any single individual, even the chair. You'll be able to follow best practices for discussion, to respond to disorder and difficult people, to make motions and amendments, and to run effective public comment sessions. I want to say that I'm not an attorney. This is strictly based on the principles and practices of parliamentary procedure. Nothing in this presentation constitutes legal advice. So the workshop method is we're going to be in the League of Northwest Dino Cities. This is not entirely realistic, it's a fantasy, but there is some overlap with real life. And you're going to be the members of the Dynopolis City Council. So here's a map of the League of Northwest Dino Cities. I know it's probably not very big, but there it is. This has 70 different cities, and we're in Dynopolis, the capital city down here where the arrow is. It's the regular council meeting. The motto of the City of Dynopolis is, "We do our best for all our residents, whether we like them or not." So obviously, the first thing you do in chairing a meeting of the council is to call the meeting to order. You sit in the chair reserved for the person running the meeting. Chair has two meetings. It means you as the individual, and it means the station, the chair in which you sit. This comes from olden times, when only the king or the emperor or the pope had a chair. Everybody else either stood or sat on benches. So you wrap your gavel lightly one time and announce, "This meeting of the Dynopolis City Council is called to order." You lead the pledge of allegiance, you ask the clerk to take the role, and you announce that a quorum is present or not. Now, the quorum is the minimum number of voting members who must be present for business to be done. Usually, it's a majority that's more than...
Anne, I apologize for interrupting you. Our council is having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up at all? Unfortunately, our speaker does not amplify you enough.
Okay, let's see what we can do. I think I can, I'll try turning up the volume here and moving the speaker closer in, the mic, hold on. Is that better? Is the amplification better? Is the amplification better?
It is not.
It is not. Okay, let's see what else we can do. Okay, let me check the Zoom settings. Hold on a sec here. Up here. Okay, I've moved the microphone volume to the top level. Is that better?
That is a little bit better, yes.
Okay, okay, we'll go with that. And I'll try to speak up also. So let's go back to the slides here. So quorum is different from votes cast. If you lose your quorum, you can't do business. So that's something that's very important to know. And of course, local government bodies must not create a walking quorum or a serial meeting. When members of the body talk or email with each other outside of meetings, such that a quorum is discussing the body's business, the Open Public Meetings Act has been violated. I'm sure you're familiar with this. It happened to my own city of Shoreline, my home city, where some of the council members exchanged in a series of emails that ended up with them creating a quorum, and they had to pay personal fines for that violation. You can talk to other people as long as the total number involved is less than a quorum. So your agenda is prepared by the leadership, but it's within control of council, subject to notice requirements, of course. And Roberts Rule says that if you follow the standard order of business, you don't need to vote to adopt an agenda. But many bodies do vote. It takes a majority vote to adopt and a two-thirds vote to change later in the meeting. Now, this is an example of a simplified standard order of business. Approval of minutes, officers' remarks and reports, committee reports, unfinished business, you see, we don't use old business anymore, and then new business if your city includes this agenda item. Many cities don't really have new business as such for this reason. This is an excerpt from the City of Sea Tax Procedures. "The City Council desires to provide adequate time for administration and staff analysis, fact-finding, and preparation. Except in extraordinary or unusual circumstances, all items that are not routine in nature shall, when presented, include a completed council agenda bill." So how are we doing on volume there? Is that better? A little better?
It's okay.
All right. So I get asked sometimes, what's the difference between the regular agenda and the consent agenda? The regular agenda lays out the items to be taken up at a particular meeting. It follows your order of business. The agenda may include, as a single item, adoption of the consent agenda. A consent agenda lists items that are expected not to be controversial. If any member requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda, it's done on request, and the item is then placed at its proper place in the regular agenda. The key point is that the consent agenda cannot be discussed or debated. It's adopted with a single vote, and the minutes must list all the items that were approved. Sometimes I see the consent agenda was adopted, but nowhere in those minutes does it say what the items were. An item approved by voting on a consent agenda is a vote just as much as if you took it individually. It's important not to include reports in the consent agenda. It's fine to include vouchers and minutes, but it should not include informational financial reports or reports from advisory or outside bodies. These can be noted as received for filing. The reason is that a vote to approve, adopt, or accept a report means that the body accepts the report and its recommendations in their entirety. If you want to do that, that's fine. But for instance, you have no way, as a council, of verifying that the financial reports are correct. You will accept the auditor's report at the end of the year, but not the routine financial reports. So any questions so far? Anybody have something you'd like to ask about? Okay, let's look at meeting discussion, point of order, and appeal. And we're going to start with an exercise, Raising the Parking Fee. So you have the script there in front of you. I'd like you, as we read through this, to watch for rules for discussion, inappropriate remarks, point of order and appeal, and the chair being out of line. And I'm going to be the chair, and believe me, the chair will be out of line. Now, in real life, members must be recognized by the chair before speaking. But in this script, the numbers take the place of recognition, just to speed things up. So I'd like to ask for some volunteers to read the roles in raising the parking fees. All you have to do is read. You can put a little bit of body English on it, but you don't have to improvise in any way. So who would like to be these different roles? I will mention that the environmentalist and the elderly member are a bit feisty. So if you enjoy that kind of role, you might volunteer. Why don't you raise your hand if you think you might like to do a role? Okay, I see Larry. What would you like?
I'd like to be the elderly member.
Okay, very good. And was that Kate? Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Who would you like to be?
Environmentalist.
Very good. And then who else? Who else is brave enough? Bob?
I'll be the banker.
Okay. And two more? James?
I will be the doctor.
Good? And one more? Chris?
Yeah, the other, the teacher, is that it?
That's it, that's it. So I'm going to stop my share so that I can see everybody, and since you have the script, I will not, I will not show it on my screen. Okay, so I'm the chair. "There is continuing pressure on the parking spaces in the downtown areas of the City of Dynopolis. The staff has reviewed the matter carefully. As you know, our current rate is $2 per hour. The staff recommends that the new fee be set at $20 per hour. Does anyone care to make that motion?"
I move that the parking fee be set at $20 per hour.
And I second that.
Very well, it has been moved and seconded that the parking fee be set at $20 per hour. We will now have discussion on the motion. Environmentalist, as the maker of the motion, you have the right to speak first.
Well, I'm a believer in public transportation myself. I think that this increase will lessen congestion and also force more people to take buses or walk. It's a good idea for the environment and for our city.
Further discussion? The chair recognizes the elderly member.
I think it's a terrible idea. Zip me around.
I think this is a terrible idea. We've just learned that we have $10 million surplus. Why would we increase parking fees and burden our residents this way?
Do you know the parking fees in most cities of the league are $15 per hour? We are so far below the market that it's ridiculous.
Well, that's not a reason to go crazy and lay this burden on our residents. Many elderly dinosaurs are really feeling the pinch. Our current tough economic times have hit them hard.
There's no point being an old softie and begging for sympathy for the down and out. If they had an ounce of gumption, they would have saved up for their old age.
What a hard-hearted comment. Someday, you might be old and wrinkled and poor yourself. Have you no compassion?
All I have to say about that is nonsense, applesauce, and balderdash.
Point of order.
State your point.
These members are monopolizing this discussion. Under Roberts' rules, no one can speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once.
Oh, the point is well taken. Members must speak in turn. Thank you, banker. Further discussion?
This is likely to put... This is likely to put a crimp on the vitality, vitality of our downtown. As a business owner, I'm really concerned about this. I speak against the motion.
I see those arguments, but I think we have to be prudent. I guess on balance, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Honestly, I think you dinosaurs are just living in the past. We ought to be preparing to have driverless cars, not raising the rates on our parking lots. You're just a bunch of has-beens.
Point of order, chair.
State your point.
That is an insulting remark. According to Roberts' Rules of Order, all of us are obliged to speak with courtesy and respect, including the chair.
Oh, oh, yes, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for her remarks. Further discussion?
Boy, in my opinion, this council is clueless. We have our heads stuck in the concrete. Given the way the stock market is trending, our surplus could just disappear. I hope everyone will agree to raise those rates.
You know, I've heard better discussions... You know, I've heard better discussions in my daughter's kindergarten class. It's clear that we don't have the sharp, oh my goodness, it's clear that we don't have the sharpest knives in the kitchen drawer here.
Point of order.
State your point.
The members are insulting all of us by those remarks.
The chair will rule that the comments are indeed insulting. Members will kindly refrain from such improper statements.
I have to say that I don't think all these rules are a good idea. They're keeping us from expressing our true opinion. You're an out-of-date dinosaur yourself, Chair.
The chair will rule that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting and may not be used.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded, so the members will decide. The chair has ruled that the words "out-of-date dinosaur" are insulting. All those who believe that this ruling should be sustained, that it's correct, please say aye.
Aye.
All those who believe the ruling should not be sustained, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes and the ruling of the chair is sustained. Members may not use this term. Further discussion?
If we do this, the residents are likely to come and throw eggs at our house, houses. Or even worse, I am dead against it.
Any further discussion? Here, none will take the vote. All those in favor of raising the parking fees to $20 per hour, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes, and we will raise the parking fees to $20 per hour. So thank you all, you read that brilliantly and with great bril. So that was very, very nice. I'm, now, a discussion like that should never happen in your council, and I'm sure that it never does. But just in case, let's look at the principle of equality. This is a basic principle of Robert's rules. All members have equal rights, privileges and obligations. It's very easy to say, it's not so easy to carry out in practice. And the key point here is that discussion in council meetings is not a conversation. It's debate and it has its own rules. So this leads us to the first of our four fundamental guidelines. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. It's so important, I'm going to give it to you in red. No one may speak a second time until everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. Now, why don't we follow this? Councils tend to discuss their affairs in conversational mode. It's a small group, we all know each other. In conversations, dominant people tend to dominate and agreeable people tend to let them. So you must have a structure to make sure that everyone has an equal chance to speak. And this is both fair and efficient. It's also the best way to ensure that each person has an equal voice. There's a real paradox here. This system is formal, but it's inclusive. It makes for robust discussion and will advance your equity goals. So when it disintegrates and turns into a hockey match, as we saw in our script, if the chair doesn't intervene, a member may make a point of order. A member may make a point of order. So point of order is represented in our Jurassic Parliament system by a flying dinosaur. A main motion is represented by a T-Rex, and we'll discuss this in a little bit. We're discussing raising the parking fees. And the flying dinosaur, the pterodactyl, flies over the head of the T-Rex and the chair bats it out of the sky. The chair issues a ruling. So let's look at this, because this is a very important motion. When another member breaks one of the rules, a member may make a point of order and the chair rules on the point. The chair has to actually issue a ruling. I was heard of one meeting where the mayor said, when someone made a point of order, the mayor said, "I agree." That's not a ruling. The chair has to issue a ruling. So point of order is a motion claiming that a procedural mistake has been made. And according to Robert, it can only be made by a member of the body. We recommend that key staff be authorized also, because oftentimes, they know the rules pretty well. The public may not raise a point of order. If you have somebody standing up in your audience and shouting "point of order", that person is out of order. Now, here are some important aspects of this motion. You can make this at any time, except during voting. You do not have to be recognized and you actually may interrupt a speaker if necessary, although you don't do it lightly. But it's very important that the point of order must be made timely. It has to be made at the time of the offense. You can't bring it up the next day or the next week or even the next hour. So that's why it's so important that you're getting this training. So let's have an example of a point of order.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Point...
So you see, it's really very straightforward. A member says "point of order", the chair says "state your point", the member explains what rule has been broken and the chair gives a ruling. The point is well-taken or the point is not well-taken. Now, you notice that the chair is using the third person to keep things neutral and lessen conflict. It's like you're the voice of Robert. If you say you're out of order or you made a mistake, you're personalizing discussion and things will not go well. If someone is confused, if a council member has trouble explaining what their point of order is about, you can ask, "What rule has been broken?" "What rule has been broken?" We have cases sometimes where people just kind of say "point of order", but they don't really know what it means. And when in doubt, ask the group. The chair can always ask the group to decide if a point of order is correct, if it's well-taken or not. Here's an example. Member A says, "That statement is just a bunch of baloney." Member B says, "Point of order." State your point. The word "baloney" is insulting. The chair is in doubt and will ask the group to decide. All those who believe that the word "baloney" is insulting, please say aye. The members in favor say aye. All those who believe it is not insulting, please say no. The members opposed say no. The ayes have it, the word "baloney" is insulting and may not be used. Or the noes have it, the word "baloney" is not insulting and may be used. Now, the chair doesn't have to say "point of order". The chair has the duty of maintaining order and decorum, so the chair just needs to take appropriate action. Now suppose something happens like this. The members are just going around in circles and wasting time with this discussion.
Point of order. The chair must follow the same rules as the rest of us.
Well, the point is well taken. The chair apologizes for getting carried away. So we saw that in the little skit also. The chair is very odd, you know, but the chair, uh, if the chair breaks one of the rules, a member can raise a point of order and the chair rules on their own behavior, which seems odd, but that's the way the system works. Now, why do you make a point of order? You make a point of order if a rule has been broken. Do not make a point of order because you think someone made a factual mistake or you disagree with what they said. You speak about that when it's your turn to discuss. Once the chair has ruled on a point of order, the only allowable form of discussion is to appeal the ruling. Now, appeal, in our view, is the most important motion in all of Robert's rules and the least known. The chair enforces order and decorum, but the group is the final authority. And any two members can appeal a ruling of the chair. One member appeals and one seconds. Now, the exception is if the ruling is a matter on which there cannot be two reasonable interpretations, the ruling cannot be appealed. For instance, if your council rules say that a member of the council may serve only one term as council president and somebody nominates Ann McFarland for a second term, the chair would say that is not in order because it contradicts our council rules. So here's an example of appeal.
The port was a cesspool of corruption.
Point of order.
State your point.
That comment breaks our rules of decorum.
The point is well taken. Members may not use this term.
Appeal.
Second.
Very well, the ruling of the chair has been appealed and seconded. The members will decide the matter. The question is whether the chair's ruling that the words "cesspool of corruption" break our rules of decorum should be sustained. All those who believe it should be sustained, please say aye. All those who believe it should not be sustained, please say no. In this instance, the members voted no, so the ruling of the chair was not sustained. I've put this unhappy figure in just for fun, but in fact, if you lose an appeal, it's better to maintain a neutral face. Try to give the impression that you don't care. Or at least that you're not taking it personally, anyway. So as you saw, appeal is a little bit complicated in Robert's rules and I was interested to see this as a simple way to appeal. Any member shall have the right to challenge any action or ruling of the mayor, in which case the decision of the majority shall govern. So you can do it in a simpler way if you wish. We believe that point of order and appeal are the heart of democracy. So before we go into how to do this, I will stop my share for just, or pause it, I guess I can pause it, and ask if any of you have any questions so far or thoughts. Yes, please, Yolanda.
Thank you for bringing that up about the appeal, uh, because it has happened here in our council once. And I was a little set back from it because how it's read in our, um, in our handbook is not the way that it was handled at our council meeting. So I was, I'm glad you brought this up and, um, showed us how we can do an appeal. Because I was not, I've forgotten that we could do an appeal.
Yes, I think it's a very important motion, to my mind. It really is. Because ultimately, it is the council that's its own authority on these things.
Okay.
Yes, Kate?
So I think as part of clarifying the process of the appeal, if a council member goes to appeal and there's no second, does that just die on the floor?
Well, let me pull your rules of procedure. Hold on. Okay, so I'm looking here in section 12. Sharon, can you help me out on this? That looks more like public hearings.
That's for public hearings.
Which is not what we're talking about here.
So, section 5.2, it says the preside officer shall decide on, decide all questions on order in accordance with these rules subject to appeal by any council member.
Okay, so one council member can appeal. In your, in your city, in your rules, you do not need a second. So that's really important to know. Thank you for bringing that up, Yolanda.
Uh huh, thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Further questions? Further thoughts? Okay, well, let's go on then to how to do this. How are we going to carry all this out? So we have six recommendations for you. And I know you're doing most of these, but just to remind, seek recognition before speaking. No one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once. No interrupting in general. No sidebar conversations. Set time limits and courtesy and respect are required. So members must seek recognition from the presider before speaking. This is obviously critical, you know? You just cannot have people blurt things out. So you raise your hand and wait to speak until the presider, the chair, calls your name, nods at you or gives some other sign that you have permission to speak. The jargon is that you have the floor. And online, you can use the raise hand function or raise your physical hand. When you have not been recognized, you have a duty to remain silent. The exception is a point of order when it's essential. So I'm going to send you, after our session, a packet of reference materials which will include this wonderful paper by my colleague on the rights and responsibilities of the member. It's really very, very illuminating. So we had that guideline, no one may speak a second time till everyone who wishes to do so has spoken once, which means no cross-talk between council members. So how are you going to achieve this goal? Well, the chair can keep track of who has spoken and who wishes to speak using a chart. The chair can empower the vice chair to do this. It's good training for them. Here's a sample of a speaking chart. I use this when I run our Corral Board Meetings. I have it just here on a little clipboard and I just check off each person as they speak. And then I know who has spoken and who's waiting to speak. And you have our full permission to modify this if you like. Another great method is the round robin. The chair goes around the table, asking each person in turn for their opinion. People may pass and speak at the end. It's important to have a pencil in hand to jot down points or questions for when your turn arrives. And the chair must wait their turn also. The chair sometimes answers each person back, which is not the right way. And we also believe that this should apply to questions and answers. Sometimes you see a staff member and a council member get into a 15-minute back and forth on a topic. And that really shouldn't be happening. You don't want to let any two people hijack the meeting. When a member has the floor, they have the right to speak until they've completed their comments. Members may not interrupt each other. The chair may interrupt members when it's necessary to bring them to order. And members may interrupt to make a point of order when it's essential. No sidebar conversations, no whispering, you know all this, no texting to each other or people outside during meetings and absolutely no posting on social media during meetings. And when you're meeting online, we recommend that you keep your camera on if possible. Otherwise, you're lurking, observing your colleagues without yourself being observed. And this is disturbing and creates an unpleasant emotional imbalance. Now, I know that structuring discussion in these ways can be frustrating. Council members sometimes say, "I wish we could just hash it out and have a free-form discussion." But the Open Meetings Act and the Press of Time mean that usually, this won't serve your council well. However, sometimes there is benefit in the conversational style or informal discussion. It can be useful at study sessions or in committee meetings as long as the chair ensures that no one dominates. So you can do that for a short time, but I beg of you, please, don't make the conversational style your ordinary or your default style of discussion. It's the duty of the chair, according to Robert, to expedite business in every way compatible with the rights of members. So we recommend that councils set estimated times for agenda items and we recommend time limits on individual council member speeches, three or five minutes. Now, you can't debate a time limit. I worked with one city in Colorado that spent 15 minutes debating whether to extend the meeting by 30 minutes. It was a great lesson for me and why Robert says you can't debate these things. But you can suspend or change a time limit by a two-thirds vote without debate. So if you set up these limits, you're not shackled by them. You can change them. Here's a paper on it, "Time Limits Create Productive Meetings." Then our last fundamental guideline is courtesy and respect towards everyone are required. There are five kinds of remarks that are inappropriate during council meetings. Now, I'm just speaking here about the meeting itself. Personal remarks about other members, except for conflict of interest. Discourteous remarks, insulting language or attacks. Inflammatory language. Criticizing past actions of the group, unless the subject is under discussion or the member is about to propose to amend or rescind the action at the end of their speech. And remarks that are not germane or relevant to the discussion. So again, I'll send you this paper, "Inappropriate Remarks on Local Government Councils." So let's have an example of such a remark.
That's a flat, outright law.
That's a flat, outright lie.
So Robert says, "The measure, the not the member, is the subject of debate." The moment the chair hears such words as fraud, liar, or lie used about a member in debate, he must act immediately and decisively to correct the matter and prevent its repetition. Or another phrase I saw I liked, it said, criticize ideas and not people. Now, what about the deer in the headlights problem? Sometimes you hear a remark, you know, you know it's off, but how do you address it? How do you identify what's wrong with it and how do you respond? Well, we have a tool, this Wait-Wait Cheat Sheet, which tells you what to say in different circumstances. And indeed, I think you may have some of those in your council already. Another mayor, now retired, told me, he said, that during council meetings, when this orange laminated cheat sheet started to appear, he knew that he'd better straighten up and fly right. It was a signal to him that somehow he was off course. I think it's helpful to remember that the focus of our meeting is words on paper. Focus on the motions and not on the people who make the motions. And we recommend that council members take this approach outside the meeting also. Focus on actions taken and do not criticize colleagues outside the meeting. Now, if any question arises, whether a remark is appropriate or not, or a comment is germane, the chair rules, subject to appeal. And the chair may also turn immediately to the group to ask the members to decide. Ultimately, it's the group's call. Now, very important note, we're speaking here about discussion within council meetings. These prohibitions do not apply to the public when they're giving public comment. And we'll talk about that in section six. So I'm going to send you these sample discussion guidelines for local governments, and you're welcome to adapt them or change them or use them in any way you'd like. So we're going to have now just a little brief discussion about these ideas and how useful they might be. I'm going to stop the share so that I can see you all more easily. So what are your thoughts on these, these methods?
I just think it...
Yes. Go ahead, Yolanda.
Watch out, Manuel.
Okay, I just think that it's nice to, for you to be here and remind us and reflect on what we have heard before. But it's always nice to reflect on them again when we have new council members and also as older ones that tend to forget some of these rules. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Yolanda, I appreciate that. Are there any of them that you'd take exception to? Are there any of these rules that you feel are not very useful?
I think all of them are very useful. Even that cheat chart would be nice to have again and review it. So, thank you. If you could send those back to us, I think that would be great.
Sure, well, I can work with Shaun on that. Do you feel, do you feel bold enough, council members, to be able to make a point of order when, when it's necessary? I've seen some nodding heads, that's good, that's good. And how about an appeal? Would you feel bold enough to make an appeal? Good, good, I'm glad. All right, well, now, we're going to take a look at motions. This is where we get to get to the dinosaurs. My favorite part. Motions and amendments. So a main motion is the usual and customary way to start the action of discussion and decision-making on a council. For small boards, up to about 12 people, it's okay to have discussion before a motion is moved. But Jurassic Parliament recommends that you don't do that. We recommend moving the motion before discussing it whenever possible. So this is representing our main motion, a T-Rex. And we recommend this sequence. The staff presents the proposal in writing and answers any questions. Each council member may ask one or two questions, and then the next member has a turn. And you go around until questions are exhausted. Then the motion is moved and seconded. Then the members discuss the motion and may amend it. And then the members vote on the motion. So is this roughly the process that you use in your council?
Yes, we do.
Very good. Now, as you know, it's...
Ann, the mayor wants to say something.
Yes, indeed.
Hi, Ann. So typically, at a study session where items are presented by staff members, there are no final actions taken at those study sessions. So the final actions are taken at a city council meeting. Typically, we put the motion on the floor after it's read into the record. The motion is then made and seconded, and then we do the discussion.
Sounds great, sounds great. So it's perfectly fine to include proposed or draft motions in an agenda, and this can be very helpful in advancing the work of the body. I've worked with some small towns with less experience where the elected members get offended at that. But that's foolish, because these are complex matters. In my view, that's foolish. These are complex matters that you're dealing with. So having the draft motion before you is very important. Now, the fact that it's printed there doesn't mean that you have to take it up. You have to move the motion, you have to propose it for the body to consider it. And recently, I've had a couple of questions about whether you should move it as presented or move it with an amendment. And my preference would be to suggest that you move it as presented and then amend it later if you wish to during the discussion. And we'll talk about that a little bit. So your agenda bills also contain the very helpful item, background to the motion. So it's essential for you council members to read this portion before coming to the meeting, and I'm sure you do. And then the maker does not need to repeat or paraphrase this background information for colleagues. So that's a great thing. I haven't seen that before, and I think it's very helpful for efficiency. When can you make a new motion? If the agenda contains a draft motion, you can move it at the proper time. You can make a motion spontaneously when a subject is being discussed, if it is germane. And you can make a motion spontaneously under new business if your council includes that heading in its agenda. As I mentioned earlier, many councils don't. But don't do what I saw recently, where the council made a proclamation honoring a nonprofit. And during their acceptance speech, the leader of the nonprofit made a request for $5,000. And after the speech, a council member said, I move that we award them $5,000. You know, it was not in the proper place on the agenda. It had not been staffed, it had not been vetted, it was not in the budget. It was a complete wrench in the works. So I'm sure you wouldn't do that, but it gave me an example to mention. And I think I quoted you this already, so. So the characteristics of a main motion, it should be in writing, if at all possible. Maybe you've got it already in the agenda bill. If it's on the spot, you want to project it on the screen, or there are three-part forms you can use. A main motion should be clear and unambiguous. Don't say, I move what he just said, or so moved. It should be phrased in a grammatical positive. It must comply with the bylaws and the procedural law of the land. And you can only have one main motion at a time. This is another one of our fundamental guidelines. Robert is very linear. If we're discussing the motion to raise parking fees, and somebody says, I move that we conduct a study of all the other cities, that's out of order. And it has to run away and hide behind the trees until we've disposed of our main motion. So that's a really important concept here, one thing at a time. How do you introduce a main motion? Three little words, "I move that." All you have to say is, "I move that." Now, the member has the responsibility of formulating the motion. Don't mix up your ideas about the subject with the motion itself. Save those for debate. Sometimes we hear something like this. I've been noticing that the number of wild cats is increasing in our city, and they're getting stomped on by bigger dinosaurs. It's important that the city do something to protect them. So I think allowing caddios would be great. This fits in with our mandate to serve all species, and it will make the little kitties safer. That's the way to drive your clerk crazy. Don't do it. Say, I move that residents be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. And you can request a moment to write it down. Then somebody seconds it. Now, online, we recommend saying, Councilmember Smith seconds the motion, so the clerk knows who it is, but you don't have to in real life. And if the clerk did not hear who seconded it, they should speak up. The clerk inquires who seconded this motion. In general, the clerk must do this when lack of clarity prevents doing the job, and the council must be patient. Now, you second a motion to show that you would like to talk about it. There's no need to be recognized. You just call out "second." And it's okay to second a motion you disagree with, if you want to explain why it's a bad idea. If there's no second, the chair says, there being no second, the motion will not be considered, and then moves immediately to the next item of business. Now, notice that, under Robert's Rules, you can't speak against your own motion. But if the discussion has changed your mind, you should request permission to withdraw the motion. The maker of a motion can vote against it. They can vote against it. Now, if you're out driving and you come up to an intersection, you don't have to stop and think, should I step on the brakes or step on the gas? You know immediately what to do, because you've internalized the system of traffic signals. Well, I would like you all to internalize the eight steps to process a motion. It's really very helpful with parliamentary procedure if you know these eight steps. So if you have a pencil handy, take a blank sheet of your paper from your, from your workbook, from your packet, and write these down. Because it's been proven that something stays better in your brain if it moves from your hand, up your arm, and into your brain. So first, the member makes the motion. That's the beginning. Then another member seconds the motion. Then the chair states the motion. Then the members debate and/or amend the motion. That's where amendments come in. Then the chair restates the motion and calls for the vote. The members vote on the motion. The chair states the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what happens next as a result of the vote. And then the chair states the next item of business. So here's our main motion, residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. And that, somebody says, Chair, I'm confused. What exactly is a catio? And the chair replies, a catio is a patio for cats. Here's an example. Shows them an example. Now, point of information is a question. It's also called request for information. It cannot be used to give information. If someone starts saying, I'd like everybody to know that when our neighboring city tried this, it was a disaster, that's debate. That's not a question. So if someone uses this motion incorrectly, the chair can ask, what information does the member need in order to decide how to vote? Now, step three in our list of eight is very important. The presider must repeat the motion or have the clerk repeat it. Why? After step three, the motion belongs to the group as a whole, not to the person who made it. And that way, everyone knows what we're actually discussing. So you can just repeat the title, obviously, if it's a long thing. So then we have discussion. The general contractor says, I feel that caddios will allow our dear feline friends to experience the outdoors without getting hurt or endangering other wildlife. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this motion. And the photographer says, I'm in favor. My cousin has built a catio, and her little pet Fuzzy is completely at home in it, as you can see from this picture. Here's a picture of Fuzzy at home in her catio. Then the architect says, I think this is a terrible idea. Caddios are intrusive and will ruin the look of our city. Here's an example I saw when I visited Dino Dome last week. We don't want this kind of ugly building in beautiful Dynopolis. So the architect presents them with this photo and says, this would be a disaster. So blah, 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 we have our discussion. And when it seems that discussion is finished, the chair asks, is there any further discussion, or are you ready to vote? And then, if no one speaks up, takes the vote. These are kind of rhetorical questions. Now, step five is also very important. The chair must repeat the motion before the vote is taken. Have you ever been at a meeting where, once the vote is taken, someone says, what did we just approve? And nobody knows exactly what it was. It's happened to me. So by being, repeating it, everyone knows what we're actually voting on. The chair repeats the motion. The chair says, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. The chair announces the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what will happen next as a result of the vote. And the chair announces the next item of business. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards. Or the noes have it, the motion fails, and we will not implement this proposal. So notice that on a voice vote, the chair must call for the negative vote, even if it seems obvious that the motion is unanimous. This goes back to 1604, when Parliament was quarreling with King James, he of the King James Bible. Now, there's no fixed rule about recording the vote in the minutes. You can have the motion passed, the motion failed, the motion passed by three votes to two, the motion passed with Members Smith, Jones, and Robinson voting in favor, and Members Green and Black voting against. What you don't want to have is the motion passed with Members Green and Black voting against. If you list some people who voted, list everyone who voted and how they voted. Now, there's no debate during voting. Nothing can interrupt the voting process. Members are not allowed to explain their vote during the vote or afterwards. And even a point of order must wait until the result of the vote is announced. A member may change their vote up until the time the chair announces the result. After that time, it takes unanimous consent of the body, everyone agreeing, for the member to change their vote. And once the chair has moved on to the next item of business, it's too late to change a vote. Now, under Robert's Rules, to abstain is to do nothing, and abstentions are not counted, the chair does not call for abstentions. But if you're a public body, likely you will count abstentions. And some councils have a rule that an abstention is counted as a yes vote or a no vote, and we recommend against these approaches. If you have a conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself from the vote. Recusal is a special form of abstention. Talk with your attorney before the meeting. Don't spring it during the meeting itself. And it may be that recusal is not enough. There's an important new post from MRSC, which used to be the Municipal Research and Services Center, "Resolving Financial Conflicts of Interest Is Abstaining From Voting Enough." So you might want to take a look at that. Then I just want to mention unanimous consent. It's a form of voting. It's a kind of fast-track. And it's very efficient for minor procedural matters. The presider suggests something, and if you agree, you remain silent. Your silence means consent. But if you don't want to proceed in this way, say objection. And then the presider abandons the fast-track to use the regular method. So this can be quite handy. Now, you don't need to choose roles during our break, because we've already, we've already assigned them. And we're a little bit ahead of time, so I'm just going to go on with amendments, and then we'll take a break. So amendment is represented in our system by diamentridon, diamentridon. You amend a motion to improve it, unless you're the US Congress, but we're not going to go there. The amendment applies to the main motion. The amendment must be germane, which means relevant. And anyone may move to amend, even the person who made the motion. You might look a little foolish if you make a motion and then you start amending it right away, but you, there's no prohibition against it. So the engineer says, I move that we amend the motion by adding the words, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board. So if it's adopted, the motion will read, residents will be authorized to build caddios in their private yards, provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board. provided that the plan for each catio is approved by the design review board." Now, there are four different ways to amend. You can add or insert words. You can strike out words. You can strike out words and insert words in their place. Or you can substitute, which is kind of tricky. We say, "Don't try this at home." So in this case, we're adding words. We're putting words at the end of the motion. And the amendment is processed using the same eight steps that we just saw for a main motion. How convenient. It's a wonderful thing. Now, the challenge is, and I know you know this, but the challenge is, we vote on amendments before we vote on the main motion in order to make the main motion as good as possible, to perfect the motion. So the amendment blocks the main motion. And that, as we've got our main motion here, we've got our amendment, and we're going to discuss and vote on this amendment first. Sometimes, it seems kind of counterintuitive. We haven't even decided what we're going to do yet, and we're already changing it. But that's what Robert does. So we discuss and vote on this amendment. If it passes, great. We then have an amended main motion, and we continue discussion on it. If it fails, we toss it, and we go back to discussion on the main motion. Now, this was how the whole idea of Jurassic Parliament came to me. I was trying to think. It was when the movie was so popular, and I was cleaning my son Steve's bedroom. He was nine years old. And I was thinking, "How can I show people that the amendment blocks the main motion?" And my eye fell on his dinosaurs, and I stole them. I stole them. So that's why we got the idea of the main motion and then the amendment blocking the main motion. I owe it all to Steven Spielberg and my son Steve. So people sometimes get confused and don't realize that after voting on the amendment, the process continues. Once the fate of the amendment has been decided, debate continues on the main motion, and more amendments are possible. Once you've dealt with one amendment, you may have others, provided they apply to a different aspect of the main motion. It takes special actions, reconsideration, to go back and change something we've already amended. And after all amendments have been processed, the body still must vote on the amended main motion. Now, I just want to mention friendly amendment. Do you ever have friendly amendments in your council? Do people sometimes offer friendly amendments? Okay. Well, then, it's not maybe a big issue. But in some cities, it is a big problem because someone offers a friendly amendment, and the mayor immediately turns to the maker of the motion and seconder to ask if they will accept it. And that's very wrong. You have to handle it the same as any other amendment. Is there a second, and so on? Because, once the motion has been stated by the chair, the maker and the seconder have the same rights as any other member. No more and no less. Now, and we're coming to the end of this challenging topic here. When an amendment has been proposed, it's called a primary amendment. It's also possible to amend the amendment. Horrible phrase, which is called a secondary amendment. Now, again, this is processed by the same eight steps, except that no further amendments are possible. No tertiary amendments. So we've got our primary amendment. Dimetrodon here. And then, somebody can propose a secondary amendment. Small dimetrodon. Which, again, we're going to discuss and vote on. And if it passes, it becomes a part of the amendment, and we keep on going. Or if it fails, we toss it away. So the architect says, "I move that we amend the amendment by striking the words 'design review board' and inserting the words 'a licensed architect.'" So if it's adopted, the amendment will read, "Provided that the plan for each catio is approved by a licensed architect." So the secondary amendment blocks the primary amendment. You discuss and vote on the secondary amendment. You discuss and vote on the primary amendment. And then, you discuss and vote on the main motion. Now, according to Robert's Rules of Order, details of each amendment and how it was voted on are not included in the minutes. The minutes say, "After discussion and amendment, the following motion was adopted." Then, I want to mention "call the question," which we represent in Jurassic Parliament by triceratops. So, again, people often process this motion wrong. You can't simply cut off debate by saying, "Question." You have to be recognized to make this motion. It requires a second. It cannot be debated or amended. And it takes a two-thirds vote to pass. So on a council of seven, five are going to have to want to cut off debate for this motion to pass. Okay. So now, we're ready for our break. I won't go back to my beach by a sea. But maybe before, I'll just ask if anybody has any particular questions on motions. We're going to do a practice in a moment, so we'll have plenty of time.
Counsel, do you have any questions? I don't see any questions.
Very well. Could you declare a ten-minute recess for us?
I will do that. Counsel, we have a ten-minute recess. Let's come back in six fifty-five.
Thank you very much. See you then. And if you don't like the roles that you have, there are fifty more of them. So go talk with Sean and get yourself a couple more if you want to be more creative.
Do you hear anything, Jason? Shut your door, Jason.
Okay. Now you can unmute through.
Counsel, I call this meeting back to order.
Thank you so much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So now, we're going to put all of this into practice. I'm going to share my screen briefly, and then we'll try it out. So the city of Dynopolis has a $10 million surplus. And the question is, what will the city do with it? Well, there are members of the council who are in favor of building a performing arts center. So it has already been moved and seconded that the city build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed $10 million. Now, we remember those eight steps for processing a motion. So we've already got through these three. The member makes the motion. Another member seconds it. And the chair states the motion. The members debate and/or amend the motion. So we're going to be entering this little drama at stage four. Stage four, debating and possibly amending the motion. Then, the chair will restate the motion and call for the vote. The members will vote on the motion. The chair will state the results of the vote, whether the motion passes or fails, and what happens next as a result of the vote. Then, the chair will state the next item of business. So I'm going to stop my share here. And you all have a role which you are going to be playing during this debate. Now, I've given you on that sheet, on those role sheets, suggested remarks. But you don't have to make those remarks. You can make any remarks that you like. This is free-form. This is not like that script that we had earlier. You're free to say anything, to move any amendment. You're also free to behave badly. You're also free to behave badly. So I'm going to ask you to raise your hand to be recognized. And before you start speaking, tell us what role you're playing, so we know who you are. So I'm the chair, and we're now having discussion on the motion to build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed $10 million. So who would like to speak?
I... I will speak.
Could you raise your hand when you'd like to speak? Yes, thank you, James. So tell us who you are.
I'll be the baker.
Very good. So you give us your comment, your baker's comment.
So the city... That the city build a performing arts center at the minimum cost of $10 million. So, I'm, I'm gonna do the remarks now?
Yes, you read that remark, or whatever else remark you like.
Okay. "I would be interested in providing Ginkgo biscuits to the refreshment stands at the center. Our biscuits are tasty and hotful."
That's certainly an admirable suggestion, Mr. Baker. The chair will suggest that at this point, we are considering the broad prospect of building the arts center and that we will be taking up such details as the services to be provided at a later time. But do I take it that you're in favor of this proposal?
Um, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, very well. Another speaker. Raise your hand, yes. Larry.
I am the opera fan, and I would like to speak in favor of this motion. We spend a lot of money wasting it on parks and roads and other things that we provide. It's time that we provide opera fans with the resources that they need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Further discussion? Kate.
As the port director, I have to say, shiver me timbers. How can we think about a project like this when our port timbers are covered with barnacles?
So you're against the motion?
That is correct. I am against the motion as port director.
Thank you. Bob?
Starbucks would be the best vendor to provide beverages at this center.
Very well. The chair again will suggest that perhaps we might take these things up later after we've decided whether to build the center at all. Do you have a view on the center as such?
Well, I move that we give Starbucks an exclusive franchise to provide coffee at city events.
So the chair will rule that the proposed motion is out of order because we are talking now about the proposal to build a performing arts center, and all motions must be relevant to that proposal. Further discussion? Chris?
Thank you. I, I'm the architect. So, to me, building a performing arts center is a splendid idea. It should be a superb model of architectural glory.
Thank you, Mr. Architect. Further discussion? Yolanda?
I'm the pharmacist. We've been hit by the pandemic so hard that mental health is really suffering. We ought to use the money to offer free, free value to all our residents.
Thank you. So I take it you're speaking against the motion?
I'm speaking against the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? James, the baker. Unless you're somebody else. Sure, absolutely.
Sorry. I'm the auto mechanic. Oh, come on. What about the working stiffs? This would be of interest only to posh people with big incomes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Very well. So everyone, please be sure your mic is on. We'll take the vote on the proposal to build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed $10 million. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Eyes have it, the motion passes, and we will build a performing arts center at a cost not to exceed $10 million. No excessive celebration there, Chris. Was there anything funny about that? About my call, the way I called that vote?
I would say that
Seemed like the nose had it.
Yeah.
But I was on the prevailing side, so I wasn't gonna challenge it.
Well, but before we even get there, a member can say, division. A member of the body can call out without being recognized, division. Anybody wanna do that?
Division.
Oh, a division has been called for. Very well. We will take the vote by a different method. See, the chair has a duty of calling the vote correctly. And if you think it wasn't right, you can call a division, and the chair has to take the vote again. And the way you voted before doesn't count. So all those in favor of building the performing arts center at a cost not to exceed $10 million, please raise your right hand and keep it up. Thank you. Just one hand, please. Thank you. Hands down. All those, hands down now. And all those opposed, please raise your right hand and keep it up. Thank you. Hands down. So the chair sees three opposed and three in favor, which means that it's a tie, and a tie vote fails. So we will not build a performing arts center. So keep in mind, division. Division is a very useful tool. All right. Now, since we've got all that moolah, we've got that $10 million, we can propose motions that you might make. So kindly seek recognition and propose a motion. You can propose a motion that's on your sheet of paper, or you can propose something else. So the chair recognizes Kate, who was the port director the last I noticed.
Arr, and I shall continue as port director. I move that we form a consortium of the five other ports of Dino Bay.
Thank you. Is there a second? So it's been moved and seconded that we form a consortium with the five other ports of Dino Bay. Do you care to speak to your motion?
That I do. All the traffic is going to Port Dino and Montadino. We need to rev up the economic engines. With this $10 million, we can invest it into our infrastructure and get more back that we can put into performing arts later. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? So just think of your role and think of how you'd feel about this. Are you in favor or are you opposed? Yes, Larry?
I rise to oppose this motion. As the superintendent of our school district, we could spend this money better by accommodating our students and teachers in our district. The families depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? So I'm not gonna call on Kate. Tell everybody else who's had a chance to speak wants to do so. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Yes, Chris?
Can we have the motion repeated?
I would ask the member to repeat the motion.
Arr, as port director, I move that we form a consortium with the five other ports of Dino Bay.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Chris?
Can I, can I ask a question of the motion maker?
You ask it of the chair.
Of the chair. Who is the chair?
It's me.
That's you? Okay. Are, are the five other ports in Dino Bay, are they controlled by pirates?
The chair will ask the port director to answer this question.
In response to your point of information, I would like to say that the other ports are indeed run by pirates as well as privateers.
Thank you, Madam Port Director. Further discussion? Yes, Yolanda?
Could I change my vote? Because I'm against pirates that are going to be running or having interest in, in, in this, in this funding.
So we haven't voted yet. We haven't voted yet. So you will be ready to be able to vote against, as I presented, you're indicating you will do. See, this is when you let your views be known, is during the debate.
Okay.
If you plan to vote against, it's perfectly fine to say so. Yes, James?
So, Chair, I would like to find out what, what's the cost of doing business at the ports is going to cost us? Especially with the pirates and the privateers doing business over there.
So the chair had a discussion with the development team about this prior to the meeting, and she was informed that we would have to pay a $5 million insurance policy in order to proceed with such a consortium, which would leave $5 million for the business of the consortium itself.
Thank you, Chair.
Chris?
I, I'd like to point out that the, the last time we did business with pirates, they, they stole all the parrots in our town.
So that's a comment against the motion?
That's correct.
See, according to Robert's rules, technically speaking, you're supposed to either be debating for or against. You're not supposed to make random comments, so. All right. I think in a study session, it's a little looser, but.
If you don't vote for this, I'm gonna make y'all walk the plank.
Members will kindly refrain from speaking without being recognized. So, and also from making personal threats. Those are not allowed under our code of conduct. All right. Further discussion on the motion to form a consortium? Anyone have any comments? Are you ready to vote? Very well. All those in favor of forming a consortium with the five other ports of Dino Bay, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
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 The nose have it, and the motion fails, and we will not build a consortium. We will not create a consortium. Okay. So now we have time for another motion. Or if one of you likes, one of you council members could take the chair and be the chair for processing a motion. Does anybody feel brave enough to try that? Is there any volunteer who's willing to put his rock off the plank, and so to speak? Yes? Okay, Larry, great. So then, your opening is, would any member care to make a motion?
Would any member care to make a motion? The chair recognizes James.
Thank you, Chair. I move to make a motion to provide electric cars for all dinosaurs under 500 pounds.
Second.
So we have a motion to provide electric cars to all dinosaurs of less than 500 pounds, and we have a second. Is there any debate?
So James can speak first if he wants to, because he made the motion.
James, do you care to?
Thank you, Chair. Electric cars are the, the future. And especially for, for dinosaurs under 500 pounds, it's a no-brainer at this point. So I think we should do it.
Thank you, James. I see we have Chris Sterns with his hand up. What is your, how do you wish?
I, I'm speaking against the motion. Dinosaurs are notoriously poor drivers. They lack the long arms necessarily to grip the wheel, and their eyes are on the opposite side of their heads. So they have very poor depth when it comes to driving and seeing hazards.
So do we have, oh, yes, I see that we have Kate.
In my alternate role as a psychiatrist, I would move to amend the motion that all dinosaurs, regardless of size, should be given electric vehicles, and that we not be exclusionary to dinosaurs regardless of the position of their eyes, short arms, or weight.
Is there any further debate?
Well, wait a minute. She's made an amendment. She's proposing an amendment.
Okay. That, that's right. Thank you.
So we have to find out if there's a second.
Okay. Do we have a second for that amendment? Yes. Yolanda?
I would like to second on that amendment.
All right. So the debate is now on the amendment. Do you care to speak to your amendment?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So the chair must repeat the amendment?
Okay.
And, and that, I would suggest, Kate, if you don't mind, just in the interest of keeping it simple, that we, that we just talk about making it all dinosaurs and leaving out the discrimination part.
So the, the amendment is to, to eliminate any qualifications for any dinosaurs to receive an electric car. So would you care to speak to your amendment?
I think the amendment speaks for itself. Thank you.
Any other debate on the amendment? So we will, oh, yes, I see we have Ann there that would like to speak to the amendment.
So I'm the burnt-out member. And I think this is just an example of the typical pie in the sky thinking of this ridiculous council. You people have lost touch entirely with our citizenry when you're proposing something like this.
Excuse me. I'm gonna interrupt you. I'm gonna interrupt you at this point. You have violated the decorum of this council, and I'm asking you to please not repeat that.
Well, it's great that you're interrupting, Larry. And so my suggestion is, you know, just, just say, that, those remarks violate the decorum. Kindly do not repeat them.
Thank you.
So kindly, you know, it's the iron fist and a velvet glove. You can't be too polite when you're stopping somebody who's being impolite. So good job.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Chris?
I'm, I'm going to speak against the amendment. We, we have not consumed all of the fossil fuels comprised of the dinosaurs yet. So we should not be endorsing electricity.
All right. Do we have any other debate on the amendment? I, I would like, as chair, take the privilege of commenting. The fact is that I'm opposed to this amendment because I think we have to look out for the smaller dinosaurs. They don't have as much legroom, and they've gotta, it takes them longer to get places. But in addition to that, I concur with Councilmember Chris, who has decried the fact that we have not used up all the excess dinosaurs and haven't pumped them to the surface yet. So I agree with that. So we, the chair will declare, oh, let's see. We have Councilmember Ann.
So I'd like to make a point of personal privilege here, which is, or actually, it's not a point, it's a point of order.
What is your point of order?
I find it offensive. I find it offensive to have dinosaurs referred to as oil. To be allowed our dignity and our status as creatures who roam the earth. And so I maintain that that remark was out of order.
Since we live in a dinosaur-oriented community, the chair will concur. We will no longer use that kind of term.
I, I, can I, can I appeal?
Sure.
Do we have a second? We have a
I would like to second that, Chair.
So the chair has a motion and a second. It's undebatable, if I'm correct?
Right. Decorum is undebatable.
Decorum is undebatable, so I will bring this to a vote. All council members that believe that the comment about dinosaurs being referred to as oil is a break with decorum on this council. All those that believe that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
That's okay. You can vote it that way.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So the ayes have it. So the chair rules. Next, we will vote on the amendment to the motion. That amendment to the motion is to eliminate any qualifications and provide electric vehicles to all dinosaurs in our town. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, nay, nay.
Chair determines that the ayes have it, so ordered. Now we will move to the main motion that has been amended. The main motion is to provide dinosaurs for, excuse me, electric vehicles to all dinosaurs, and has been amended to provide that for all dinosaurs in town. provide that for all dinosaurs in town. So all those in favor of providing electric vehicles to all dinosaurs, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
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 The ayes have it, so ordered. Motion to adjourn is in order.
Great job, great job. All right, well, have you had enough fun, or does anybody want to do one more? It's up to you. Anybody want to be a Chair? You have a great model there. Larry did a fine job. All right? No? Okay. Well, then we'll continue with our plan. Thank you very much, all of you, for such a great participation. It's just always a pleasure when people take it on and really enjoy it. So our next topic is called, "Who's in Charge?" Who's in Charge? So I want to mention a note on the role of the Chair. Robert has different rules for small boards, up to about 12 people. In a small board, the Chair may make motions, discuss, and vote unless the law, the regulations, or the bylaws say otherwise. And of course, when we have an elected strong mayor, there are restrictions there. We recommend, in any case, that the Chair, if speaking and voting, doesn't last. So this is a Jurassic Parliament suggestion. And sometimes people ask, "Can the mayor take part in discussion?" Well, in a council-manager city, which is not you, the answer is straight out yes. It's a little more subtle with a strong mayor. In Washington State, a strong mayor, by custom, may take part in discussion even though technically not a member of the council. Nevertheless, the mayor must remain the servant of the group and may not dominate the discussion. So we have a citizens' guide that goes into this in more detail, and we will be publishing an article on the Jurassic Parliament blog in the next, in this month, about this topic. Because we've seen situations where cities sometimes don't want to hear anything from the mayor, which we think is a mistake. We think that's a bad idea. We've also seen cities where the mayor really rules the roost and dominates the discussion, which is also not good. So this is the citizens' guide, and it's available for free. It's not a Jurassic Parliament product. It was prepared by a group of parliamentarians as a pro bono project, and I will be sending this to Sean for you. So the reason for we, our recommendation of speaking last is this quotation from Robert's Rules, "The President should, of all the members, have the least to say upon the substance of pending questions." So in all of this, I'm referring to Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, 12th Edition, which is abbreviated R O N R, which stands for Rules of Order Newly Revised. Well, I want to say, and I hope that you all will not reveal my secret to my fellow parliamentarians, that I think in many respects, this is a terrible book. In many respects, this is a terrible book. Robert, originally, was a lieutenant colonel in the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and his first assignment, in fact, was on San Juan Island, where he built the embankment that was gonna protect us from the British in 1859. He published his first book in 1876. It was a pocket manual. It would literally fit in your coat pocket. And somehow, it took off. All across the nation, people were thrilled to have a common understanding of how to run meetings. But I believe that his heirs, his son, grandson, and great-grandsons, have kept on improving it until they've wrecked the book. This is a very common phenomenon. You know, anybody who's tried to buy a plain cup of coffee in Starbucks knows what I'm talking about here. But nevertheless, there's a core to Robert's Rules that we really need, and that is essential for good and fair meetings. And the Robert's Rules people have finally broken down, and they have published this book, Robert's Rules of Order in Brief. It is a very good book. You can read it in a weekend, although nobody wants to, but you can. And it's also, it's the best introduction that I know of. And both of these volumes are available in spiral-bound editions only from the National Association of Parliamentarians. And we recommend that, because they're much easier to deal with than stiff little paperbacks. So this is, I want to point out to you that Robert's Rules comes at the bottom in terms of the authorities. The Constitution, federal law, and state law are at the top, then your charter, your Articles of Incorporation, or code, whatever it is that allows you to exist as a legal entity, then your bylaws or council rules, then any special rules of order that you may pass, and then at the bottom, Robert's Rules of Order. So your rules have higher authority than Robert. You may choose the rules that suit the council best, and that's, of course, what you've done in establishing your procedures. So I'd like to talk here about two different types of organizations. One is shaped like a triangle or a pyramid, and at the top, you've got the boss who's in charge. The boss recruits people to do the work of the organization, tells them how to do it, and if they do it badly, fires them. So this is a very common structure. Every corporation has a CEO, every school has a principal, every army has a general, and one feature of it is that it has status or rank, and people who are near the boss are higher in status than people who are down below. Now, you hope that people of higher status use their status intelligently and listen to the people down below, which they have a tendency not to do, but in my view, it's okay, because you need the hierarchy, the status, in order to get the accountability, in order to know where the buck stops. If all of us who are on this call had the job of building, in addition to the Auburn City Hall, and we all had the same status, we would never succeed. We would never be able to do it. So this kind of organization is so common that many people think of it as the only type, as the standard or default type. But in fact, there's a whole other kind, which is called a voluntary association. Now, in a voluntary association, a group of people come together to achieve a common purpose. They set up some guidelines for themselves, and they choose a leader, but the leader is a peer or an equal with special responsibilities during the meeting. And so the key point is that, in a voluntary association, each member has an equal right to speak and to try to persuade others to accept their view. During meetings, the Chair controls the process, so the group can make the decisions. And during meetings, the Chair is the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. This is so important, I'm gonna give it to you in red. The Chair is the servant of the group, and the group is the final authority. That's the most important thing I'm gonna say today. Now, this, of course, pertains to meetings itself. So I'm gonna play you an example here of somebody who got elected Chair and did not know that, and who instantly made quite a serious mistake. It's a little choppy, but I hope it will give you a feel for it.
And also, tonight, the Spotsylvania School System woke up this morning with a new chairperson and a fired superintendent. The almost four-hour-long meeting started with heated back-and-forth about the procedure before longtime board member Kirk Twig was ultimately voted in as the new chairman. His first item of business, though, caused more chaos amongst the board. Take a listen.
Dr. Baker is no longer with us. He is terminated this evening.
You have to vote.
He is terminated without cause.
Mr. Twig, no, he's not. You need to make a motion. There needs to be a motion and a vote.
Well, do we have a vote, a motion to support what I just referenced?
Point of order, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, please follow the rules of procedure.
Sure, okay.
Okay?
So that was only on regional TV, but it's certainly a striking example of somebody who was, did not know what he was doing. Now, you have both types of structure. The council forms a voluntary association, and the mayor and staff form an accountability hierarchy. So they're quite different in nature. Now, my next question for you is, what is each person's individual authority? When you council members walk out on the street after this meeting, how much authority as individuals on the street do you have? Anybody want to tell me?
We have to be very careful out there about what we say, because we're not speaking for all of our members. We are one out of seven.
Exactly. When you are not in a meeting, you have zero authority. You have zip, nothing, nada whatsoever. And this is a, thank you for your comment, and this is a phrase which I think expresses it very well. All members of a governing board share in a joint and collective authority, which exists and can be exercised only when the group is in session. So that's the nature of your authority. It's joint and collective. What's your individual power? You know this, of course, but legislation is the prerogative of the council. The mayor supports the council, but does not decide. Administration is the prerogative of the mayor, and the council may not interfere. So council members may not do the work of the city. Elected officials care deeply about their city. Sometimes they have special knowledge and expertise. They may make suggestions to the mayor, but they may not do the work of the city themselves. They must not cross the line between legislation and administration, and this is a legal requirement. So your duty as a council member is to debate and determine overall strategy, policy, and legislation for your city, and leave the details of operations to the mayor and staff. Discussion on council motions can and should be vigorous. Express your views freely, and don't hold back. Once the vote has been taken, however, things change. It's okay to disagree. The fact that people have different opinions is a strength. It's a good thing. But we tend to identify with our own position, and when we're defeated, we sometimes take it personally. And this is a mistake, because at the end of the day, the body must unite behind its decision. It's a basic democratic principle that the decision of the majority voting at a properly-called meeting is the decision of the body as a whole, and the minority must make it their decision as well. Now, this is a terrible system, but I like Winston Churchill's quote. Winston Churchill famously said, "Democracy is the worst system of government in all the world, with the exception of those others that have been tried from time to time." So in a democracy, how we decide things is more important than what we decide. Members, when serving on a public body, have a duty to uphold the decision of that body even if they disagree with it. Members may express their disagreement in public, but may not attempt to undermine the decision. Of course, they're free to try to persuade their colleagues during the meeting to change the decision within limits. Now, we all want to be right. It's human nature to be unhappy when you oppose the decision, and our current culture places a strong premium on individuality. I invite you to commit yourself to a bigger principle than your own views, because after everyone's voice is heard, including the minority, it is the majority that makes the decision. And we have this paper, "Lost the Vote: Don't Sabotage the Council's Action." And I believe deeply in Elias Kenedy's remark, "That the ballot box is sacred because the alternative is blood." All over the world, we see societies where matters are decided by force and not by the democratic process, and you on this council are the inheritors. You are the representatives of our founders, of Washington, Madison, Adams, Jefferson. You are acting according to the will of the people, and I honor you for it. It's why I love the work I do in Jurassic Parliament, because I fear that oftentimes, our residents and citizens really don't realize how hard you work and how much effort you put in to serving the community. So more power to you. You have my gratitude for your extraordinary service. Now, let's look at public comment. I want to give another disclaimer here. Robert's Rules of Order contains very little guidance on public comment. In general, this information comes from Jurassic Parliament's experience over more than 15 years of working with local governments. So I want to distinguish here between a public hearing and public comment. A public hearing is an administrative procedure governed by state law and your council rules, and you must include the testimony in the minutes. The public comment period is an agenda item governed by your own rules, and we strongly recommend not including public comment in your meeting minutes. And by the way, we'll have a workshop at the end of May on this topic, which will go into much more detail about public hearings. So why public comment? A council meeting is not a meeting of the public. It is a meeting of the council that is held in public. And the purpose of the public comment period is to allow the council members to become informed about the views of the public. It should be carefully structured. You want to be consistent. It's best to announce the rules at the beginning of each session and provide a written handout. And for the sake of fairness, rules for public comment must be enforced consistently. The public must address their remarks to the Chair, not to individual council members or the audience. I was working with one city, and they got a handheld mic, and immediately, people started turning around and haranguing the crowd. That is not what you want to have happen. Ask staff to time speakers, so the Chair is not distracted. Some bodies have a visible timer, so speakers know when their limit is approaching. And speakers may not donate their time to someone else. This is not a dialogue. Don't get into back and forth with the public. If the Chair starts dialoguing with the public, the situation can quickly become confusing. If you respond to some speakers but not to others, it can be interpreted as showing bias. One city member wrote to me, "We tell the public it is a one-way communication to the council." Now, the public may have differing expectations. They may come to the meeting looking for answers to specific questions. They may want to argue. They may want their remarks on the record, which they cannot be. They may want to raise a point of order, which they cannot do. So education is critical here. Only the Chair may speak to the audience as a whole. We recommend that individual council members may not speak to the public or recognize people in the audience, and you certainly want to discourage demonstrations. Clapping, booing, whistling, stamping of feet, these can chill free speech, both for council members and for the public. Now, the courts have found that local governments may limit the time, place, and manner of public comment. All such restrictions must be viewpoint-neutral. You can't limit what somebody says, but you can limit when and how long. We recommend setting a time period for public comment, for example, 30 minutes, and we recommend setting a three-minute limit for individual speakers. Two minutes is kind of short, and five minutes is kind of long. If a speaker runs over the limit, interrupt and request that they conclude their remarks, or simply inform them, "Your time is up." Now, attendees do not have the right to disrupt the meeting, but the courts have found that mere words do not usually constitute disruption. In general, residents can say whatever they like during public comment, although there are some restrictions that you can set up. For instance, you can prohibit threats of violence. You can prohibit political speech. You can say that administrative complaints should be made through channels. You want to consult your attorney in any case. And I was a little concerned by this portion of your rules. Any person who causes actual disruption by failing to comply with the allotted time, making personal attacks, using hate speech, making slanderous remarks, shall be barred from further participation by the presiding officer. I think you might have consulted with your attorney and considered changing this, because, as I understand it, personal attacks and hate speech and slanderous remarks are actually allowed, and we have a very good paper on this that was written by Brent Vincent of the City of Sumner that goes into more detail. How do you act on the dais? The Chair and the members convey interest and concern The chair and the members convey interest and concern by their body language. They should listen to each person speaking as if there were no one else in the room. This is hard. And you want to keep a warm and pleasant expression or a neutral face if the speaker is not complimentary. The best approach, in our view, is to thank each speaker, even if negative, and move on. The chair may provide brief factual information, if appropriate, which must not degenerate into lecturing or criticism. For instance, if a resident asks the council to do something that it legally does not have the authority to do, we think the mayor or the chair of the meeting can say so. Don't put staff on the spot. Invite people to address questions to staff separately. It's a good idea to have a staff member there who can take down people's questions and contact information. And of course, you want to be sure to get back to them. Council members should not criticize staff in public and must be courteous to them. If the public attacks the staff, don't get defensive and don't get into a hostile exchange, but be prepared, if appropriate, to defend the staff in a calm, positive manner. Because if no response is made, it can seem as if the body agrees with the criticisms. And you always want to conclude with thanks. Explain to the public that while this is not a time for dialogue, all comments and questions are taken seriously by the body. Censority and warmth on the part of the chair will make a big difference to the experience the public has at your meeting. Of course, you know this, it's essential for you to be in touch with your public, to be responsive, and to appear responsive. So given the limitations of the public comment period, we recommend maintaining other channels for dialogue with the public. Community forums, personal discussions, coffee with the council, always less than a quorum, a forum on your website, surveys, all those things are essential. So I'm going to send you our guidelines for public comment in local government. And we're in the process of updating this to allow for online comment and for some of the changes that have occurred in the four years since we published this paper. And we also have a sub-sample public comment announcement that might be helpful to you. So I'm going to stop my share there and ask if there are any questions or thoughts about public comment. Yes, Chris?
Thank you. Earlier in your presentation, I believe you talked about the, under be consistent, the public must address remarks to the chair, not to individual council members or the audience. So what should the chair do when that happens?
The chair should intervene or, as soon as the remark is concluded, point out that that's not allowed. So if somebody says, you know, "Council member Sterns, I want to know why you voted this way," the chair should say, "The public comment is for general remarks to council and not to individuals."
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ann, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I have to say that our mayor is very quick on that because we had a situation here several years ago where I was targeted at, the audience was making some comments and the mayor immediately jumped in there and said that all comments should be directed to me. And, you know, she corrected it right away. So our mayor is very good about doing that.
That's great. I'm not surprised and I'm delighted to hear it. Thank you. Other thoughts about it? How is your public comment going? Are people reasonably calm?
We've only had two live meetings, so it's been going, well, I guess you can say it's been rocky at times, but other than that, they've been, you know, they behave themselves out there.
Well, it's been such a hard time for all of us. You know, there was a great column in The Atlantic, "Why Are People Acting So Weird", that kind of summarized the enormous and many pressures that our society and our members are feeling these days. And I, it really gave me some feeling of, of hope in a way because I do feel like these pressures, they could, they can alleviate, they can lessen, and I hope that they will. And people are just in such a state of stress, many of them, that it's, it's part of the problem. But it's been interesting to, to be updating this, you know. I, I get to include new things that I've learned. For instance, you know, it's perfectly legitimate to say that comment must be limited to matters that concern the city, the city has jurisdiction over. So there was an interesting case in the city of Pasco where somebody came every meeting and took his three minutes to say that if the city council would take the large rock in the corner of City Park and send it to Jerusalem, world peace would result. And so, are you, are you going to say that's not, uh, uh, city business? World peace is not city business? Or are you going to say, "The rock is in the park, so it is city business"? You know, we, we get some interesting things from our public. Okay, so, and, and of course, you know, as always, if you ever have questions or thoughts that you want to share with me, please feel free to get in touch. All right, so now, we, we are actually running ahead of time. I know that's a terrible disappointment to you all, but let's see what we can do. So we're going to talk about the right kind of control. So in order to put this system into play that I'm describing here and training you in, you have to have three things as a leader. You have to have the knowledge of how this system works. You have to have a majority on your council who are in favor of civility and this system. And you've got to have the personal moxie, the chutzpah, the energy and the drive to put it all into practice. Maybe 10 or 12 years ago, the city of Puyallup revoked its rules of civility. Well, if you do that, this system is not going to work. So I'm very glad that you have the rules that you have. The chair must control who speaks when. The chair serves as a benevolent dictator enforcing the rules that the group has chosen. And individual members must seek recognition before speaking. This is just critical. So if someone speaks up without being recognized, you stop them. If someone speaks out of turn, you interrupt them. If someone makes insulting remarks, you cut them off. And you want to do it in a manner that is firm but not harsh. Members have a duty to obey the chair's directions. If they disagree, they can't argue back. What can they do? They can make a point of order or an appeal. That is their response. And in doing so, in obeying the chair but speaking up when necessary, they're acting in accord with our constitution and with our deepest principles of government by the people. How should you control? Well, in some respects, the chair of the meeting is like Napoleon crossing the Alps. You know, you're the one who knows the most probably about the subjects being considered. So you want to guide your council members by stating the obvious. You, as chair, know more about the process than anybody else. You must repeat yourself and state the obvious to help bring everyone along. You want to keep things moving. You want to be brisk. You want to speak crisply, more crisply than we do in everyday life. I heard phrases like this, "Well, I guess the agenda is adopted," or "I'll kind of get a thumbs up from the board next week." Don't do that. Don't do that. Speak simply and calmly. The agenda is adopted. Our next item of business is. I will ask the board to approve this next week. We, as, as I said, firm but not harsh. So I'm going to send you this cheat sheet, Language Tips for Meeting Management, that you are most free to print out and paste to your bathroom mirror. And in the morning, when you're going through your routines, you can practice saying these phrases. They sound, both council members and the chair, they, they sound kind of pompous, you know? It sounds like you're putting on airs. But in fact, that's not the case. In fact, you're exercising a generous authority for the members of your body. And when in doubt, ask the group. I can't hammer enough on this. The chair can always ask the group to decide a question. Here's an example. The chair believes that remarks about UFOs landing at our airfield are not germane and will ask the council to decide whether the council member may continue speaking on this topic. All those who believe that the council member may continue speaking, please say aye. Aye. All those who believe the council member may not continue, please say no. No. The ayes have it and the council member may continue speaking, or the noes have it and the council member will cease from speaking. What a relief it is to give that responsibility over to the council, to the group as a whole. You don't have to stay in the kitchen and take the heat. Robert also has this famous line, "The chair should never get excited." So I want to remind you of this photograph, which, as you know, is a real live photo. It's not posed. The city in question is doing much better now, but it's a great reminder for us of what we don't want to have happen at our meetings. Now, why do we need rules? I love this quote from Richard Rohr, "Win/lose is the only game most of us understand. We have a constant unspoken need for domination and actually find no enjoyment in win-win situations." Now, I'm sure that's not true of you. I'm sure that all of you on this call are at a higher spiritual plane. But as for me, if I'm in a fight, I want to win it. And so the key thing to remember, should you feel yourself hardening into a combat position, is to soften up and back off and take it from a different perspective. So my vision for your council is that each member expresses their personal views on topics before the council with vigor, energy, commitment, and respect. And then, here's my mouse. Once the vote is taken, personal opinions and political views are less important than the majority vote of the council. Members accept the decision and move on without ranker or bitterness. So I'm going to pause there and ask if anybody has any questions or comments on that portion or on any other portion. As I say, we're going to finish up a little bit early, which I hope you all won't mind, but we have plenty of time if there's anything you'd like to explore further.
Ann, I think we're good.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go on to our conclusion. So I invite you to keep in touch. We have a monthly e-newsletter. I know some of you are subscribers. We also have a blog, which is roughly weekly, and a new advice column, Dear Dinosaur. I have a lot of fun answering that question. Feel free to email me at any time. I love parliamentary questions and I'm always happy to help out if something arises that you're not certain about. We have our book, Mastering Council Meetings. I know that many of you have this and I've offered it to you at a special discounted rate if you'd like copies for anyone on your council. So I said that after taking this training, you'll be able to describe how the authority of the group is more important than any single individual, even the chair. You'll be able to follow best practices for discussion. You'll be able to respond to disorder and difficult people, make motions and amendments, and run effective public comment sessions. So what is the purpose of your meetings under Robert's Rules? Debate and determine overall strategy, policy, and legislation for your city and leave the details of operations to the mayor and staff. Here's another paper on that. "The Chair Is Not in Charge of Your Meeting." It's kind of a paradoxical title, but I hope it makes the point. We also have Follow Four Fundamental Guidelines for Successful Meetings and Essential Guidelines for City Councils. You'll recognize some of your neighbors in some of these photos. These are the five inappropriate remarks. And point of order and appeal are just critical. They are so essential. A quick review of motions. At the right time, seek recognition from the chair. State your motion. "Chair, I move that we issue each council member a $500 bonus in recognition of their service during this pandemic." After the motion is seconded by another member and stated by the chair, explain why you think it's a good idea. After another member makes a motion, you just call out second. You don't need to be recognized. Then we have the eight steps to process a motion, which I hope you have integrated. I'll send you a paper on this also. And then amending a motion. During discussion on the motion, seek recognition. Once recognized, state your proposed amendment. "Chair, I move to amend the motion by striking out the number $500 and inserting the number $5,000." And once another member seconds the amendment, explain why it's a good idea until your attorney tells you why you can't do that. So remember that the amendment is voted on first. And once the amendment is resolved, discussion may continue on the main motion. Further amendments may be made. And finally, the vote will be taken on the main motion as amended. This is what we consider to be best practices for public comment. A summary. Set time limits for public comment and for individual speeches. Have the public address the chair and have the chair respond. Don't engage in dialogue with the public, but have arrangements to answer their questions afterwards. Speakers may not donate their time. On the dais, make the effort to be and to appear to be listening intently to all speakers. I want to give you, in closing, this wonderful quote from Samuel Johnson, the British author. He said, "Kindness is within our power; liking is not." Kindness is within our power; liking is not. You don't have to like your colleagues, but you must be kind to them. You must be kind to them because serving on a local government board is like being in a marriage arranged by the citizens. So I think that's a thought that may help you out. So I said we were here to equip you to run effective meetings to serve your community. So how, how did I do? Do you feel better equipped? I see a hands, hands going up. Great.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just, Ann, I just want to thank you for your commitment to this training, your commitment to democracy. And sometime I'd love to have a cup of coffee with you to talk about the foreign service that you've done. And thank you for that, too. We know, we are now seeing how important that is in the bigger scheme of things. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much for those remarks. And I'd love to have that cup of coffee, too. Yes, it's certainly a hard time for, for all of us. And I think we, what we see on the international scene just affirms the importance of diplomacy and the commitment to our principles. And we at least can be united in that. So, thank you. Yolanda?
Ann, I also would echo what Councilmember Brown had to say. Thank you for coming and reflecting, making us reflect what we need to be doing as council. And also, I love the ending where you said that statement, kindness is without, within our power. And a lot of times, we forget that, that we forget to treat each, each of each other with kindness. So thank you for reminding us and bringing that to the forefront.
Yolanda, you're so welcome. Thank you very much, Yolanda. Chris?
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to say that, you know, a while back, I, I had the honor of working in the House of Representatives on a committee. And the House rules are notoriously complex. And there is no training, at least there was not then, on how to work through them. In fact, it was like a highly guarded secret. And every committee had their own expert in the rules. And, you know, it was, it was really used as a way to, you know, to win battles and attack your opponents even. So I, I'm just incredibly thankful that what we're doing here is incredibly transparent, that, that we understand the rules, that they're not a mystery, you know? They're not, you know, there's a, a secret that's guarded. They're, they're there to help us and, and that the public understands them, too. So I, I really appreciate what you were doing for us.
Well, that's a very illuminating comment, Chris. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. And I, I really, I, I really think you all can be proud of the work that your city is doing.
Anyone else? Ann, I would like to thank, thank you for this evening on behalf of the whole city council and the mayor. on behalf of the whole city council and the mayor. This has been very enlightening. And I believe all the members here are very grateful for your class this evening or the training. So anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful evening. And we will see you soon, sometimes.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Bye-bye. Good night. And thank you, Sean.
Finally, council, we have community wellness discussion items, but we don't have any updates. So council, we are at the end of our council study session. The meeting is now adjourned.